Monday, October 21st, 2024, meeting of the Fitchburg School Committee. I call this meeting to order. All right, so on our agenda, there was no executive session at this time. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I ask anyone in the audience who's recording this meeting to please identify yourself for the record and state your name and city of residence. Seeing none, now I ask that everyone put your electronic devices into silent mode. Always a good move. All right, give a second. There we go. Okay, let's do, salute to the flag. Dr. Knight, can you lead us in the salute to the flag?
My pleasure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you very much. Now, we have school committee members and student reports. School committee chair report, none at this time. We have reports of the resource subcommittee.
Resource will be meeting tomorrow afternoon.
Tomorrow afternoon, is that 5:00 P.M.?
Yes. And school building needs tomorrow, 5:00 P.M.
And school building needs subcommittee, right after, did it immediately follow it?
Two meetings, 5:00 and then 5:45.
Okay, great, thank you. And next, we have the policy subcommittee.
And we're meeting on Wednesday from 5:00 to 7:00.
Wednesday, 5:00 to 7:00, and that's at the South Street Main Building?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. Student support subcommittee.
No report at this time, Madam Mayor. I think our meeting is the first week of next month.
Yes, yes.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you, Dr. Knight. School personnel subcommittee, no report at this time. Student representatives report.
Good evening. At FHS, picture days for seniors will be held on Wednesday and Thursday of this week. Grades close on November 8th, and report cards for the first quarter will be given out during advisory on November 22nd. And the Powderpuff Game will be held this Thursday, the 24th, at Crocker Field, starting at 5:30 P.M. Last night, Crock, wait, no, last Friday, Crocker held the movie night in the multipurpose building where they showed Inside Out 2.
Crocker's parent-teacher conferences are on October 24th, so make sure to schedule a time to meet with teachers. The first meeting for the 8th grade Washington, D.C. trip was held last Thursday at 5:30. Interested parents should email Ms. Carnabucci or Mr. Saradina for more information. On November 5th, there will be no school as it is a PD day. Saturday, the 27th, is a trick-or-treat on Main Street from 12:00 to 3:00 P.M. Trick-or-treating on Halloween night is from 6:00 to 8:00 P.M. Thank you.
Sorry, it looks like one of the names autocorrected. It's Mr. Seraphini, not Mr. Saradina.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? I have one. What is the Powderpuff Game?
So, the Powderpuff Game is basically where the girls in each grade, so each class forms a, is it a flag football team?
I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, a flag football team. And each grade goes against each other. So it's freshmen versus sophomores, juniors versus seniors. And it's just like a fun night, and also a fundraiser for shirts to see like which class will win.
That sounds good.
All right. And I also read that our girls' football team is going to play at Shaefer, Patriots, at halftime.
We have girls' football?
Like football.
Girls' like football.
Our high school team has been invited to Patriots.
Right, the Jets game.
To play.
What? On the 27th?
That's what I was told by the athletic director as well.
Oh, that's so cool.
Oh, we didn't hear about that.
I think it just came up.
Wow. All right. Okay, any further comment or question? All right, thank you very much. Okay, moving forward, we have approval of the minutes of the regular school committee meeting of October 7th.
Motion to approve the October 7th meeting.
Motioning a second to approve the October 7th meeting, and this will require a roll call vote. Madam Mayor? Aye. Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Dr. Knight?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffries?
Yes.
Mrs. England?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, is unanimous. Thank you, Madam Mary Alexandra. Okay, we have, next on the agenda, communications. No communications?
Communications at this time. I have just an announcement.
Sure.
Just to remind everybody here and watching on FATV, early voting has begun in Fitchburg. It will run through Friday, November 1st. Monday through Friday, the hours are 8:30 to 4:30. Takes place right in City Hall. Next Saturday, it's 10:00 to 2:00, and next Sunday, it's 9:00 to 1:00. And I believe you have until, if you're not registered to vote, you have until October 30th to register to be able to vote in the November 5th election. So, early voting, take advantage of it if November 5th doesn't work, since teachers will be in professional development today. You have an opportunity to vote ahead of time, so thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for volunteering to run our early vote, Jim.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right, so now we have a public comment. Public comments of no more than five minutes in length were offered to be submitted to the superintendent by noon today. Did you receive any public?
I did not receive any public comment.
Okay, so now invite anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to please approach the podium. Identify yourself by name and city of residence, and you're free to make a public comment of no more than five minutes at length. At 4:30, you'll receive a notice that your time is expiring. Anyone? Seeing none, we will continue on our agenda. All right, what's next on the agenda? Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening, we are continuing with our MCAS accountability presentations and school improvement plan presentations. This evening, we have Long Joe Memorial in Goodrich here. I'd like to welcome our first principal, Mark Pierce, principal of Long Joe Middle School.
Standing or sitting?
Whatever you would like, Mr. Roach, Mr. Pierce, excuse me. There we are.
So, thank you for having me today. First of all, I always enjoy this picture. There was a lot of work done to make all the lights work at Long Joe, so I know some of the alumni appreciate this picture, so I always like to start any presentation with Long Joe Middle School all lit up, including the cupola.
Gorgeous.
Beautiful.
Ms. Purdy.
Great views up there.
Next up, some highlights on instructional focus and values. So, for the last three years, we've created an instructional focus at Long Joe, so which says, "All Long Joe Middle School students, staff, and community members will invest in the Fisher Republic School core values," which you can see below, "growth-focused, vulnerable, trustworthy, adaptable, collaborative." So that every student will grow into problem solvers who thinks critically and communicates effectively. So everything we do at Long Joe always goes back to our instructional focus. Like I said, it was created three years ago, so we're in the third year of it. It was created by the I L T members, staff, and students. So our main parts of it are problem solving, academic discourse, and thinking critically. And throughout the last couple of years, I threw some pictures up there. So we have a part of our STEM library, which again, one of our focuses is critical thinking, so it'll be in STEM Week. We want to make sure that we're representing that. We've had field trips to WPI and Amherst College, which are focused on the STEM. We have our book fair, which will be in two months, again encouraging students to read and building a community of readers. And also, with the goal of building a community of readers, we also give out prizes to students who, now the next one, you'll see what I'm talking about, who have show respect, integrity, safety, engagement, unity, perseverance in our building. So students are given a prize, which is a book. Also, another picture up there is, three years ago, we brought back the National Junior Honor Society, so making sure we're representing all our students who are doing well at Long So again, some other highlights and some other pictures. Again, increasing attendance has been one of our number-one priorities, community outreach and engagement, critical thinking in professional development, building a community of readers, which I just said, student-to-student discourse, increasing STEM college and career opportunities, and building our Long Joe community. So, a couple of pictures up there, you know, building the community, you know, if I have to take a pie in the face to build a community, then that's what I do. You can see our attendance board, which that's one of the first things you come in when you come into Long Joe. You can see another picture up there, students on a field trip to WPI. And the bottom left, we had a Trust Me presentation this year sponsored by the PTO, by Camphile Productions, and they came in and spoke to the students about what it means to be trustworthy, respectful, and making good decisions. So that was, again, provided by the PTO sponsorship this year. Just some other quick building updates. We also have our new windows, and Blind Project is finally completed, so a student asked me, "Are we going to get the see-through windows this year, Mr. Pierce?" So we finally get the see-through windows in at Long Joe. Our new phone system is up and running. New locks are completed, new glass on the classroom doors, and our electric sign is up now, so if you drive by Long Joe, we have our digital sign up there. And that wasn't up more than three hours, and I think I got a call that it was too bright, so we had to turn it down. But thanks to a lot of people in this room making that happen. Our new boilers are up and running, so we had our first test last week in the cold, and few snafus in the first few days, but we got them working, and now we can shut them off this week because it's going to be 75 degrees. But, so those are some of just some updates in our building. And the next thing is our accountability status. So we just received our results a few weeks ago, and so Long Joe has kind of, the last five, six years have floated between the fourth percentile and the seventh percentile. Last year, we were in the sixth percentile, and this year, we went down 1%, so we're in the fifth percentile. As far as meeting our targets, our own local targets, that was 48%. So because we are in the bottom 10%, so we are in need of focusing and targeted support, so once again, we'll be working with the state system of support. They will be meeting with us. Usually, they come in once a month for walkthroughs, and they milk with me and my administration team, and just going over what are the things we're going to do to improve the school. This next slide is the progress towards targets. So you can see that there's two categories. There's a category of all students to the left, and there's a category to the lowest-performing students. And this is based on a point system, and again, I'm not going to go through everything here, but you can see some of the points that we received. So English language arts, we received 1 out of 4 points. Math, we received 2 out of 4 points. What that means is, we are either making progress towards our target, each content has a target, and so if you start to move towards it, you get a point. If you're closer to it, you get 2 points. If you meet it, you get 3 points, and if you exceed it, you get 4 points. So you can see on the left-hand side, far as our achievement scores, that's what we received. Again, if you look to the right of it, they also take the lowest-performing students, and you can see we made some progress, some pretty good progress with our lowest 25%, where we got 2 out of 4 points and 3 out of 4 points for ELA and math. In science, they do not calculate that one. Then if you look below, we go to our growth scores, and again, you can see we're pretty consistent, we make some pretty positive growth, so not quite meeting our targets, but almost there. And so we're going to continue to work on the growth of our students. So one area that we're focusing on is growing students, and again, trying to raise the achievement levels of our students. There is no high school completion at the middle school level, so the next one is progress towards our English language proficiency. So last year, where we received 0 out of 4 points, this year, we received 1 out of 4 points, so we made some progress towards that. And that is our access scores for our second language learners. And the best news is, again, our chronic absenteeism. We continue to tackle that every year. And so when I started at Long Joe three years ago, that was, we were at 51%, and we have gotten that down to 37%. So we keep, continue to meet our targets the last three years. We still have a lot of work to do, and some improvement, because 37% is still too high. But you can see, we received all four of our points for all students, and we received 3 out of 4 points for our bottom 25%. So again, some positive news on that front.
And chronic absenteeism is 20% of?
10%.
10%.
Students who are 10% or more. So next up, again, this just gets into the weeds a little bit for the achievement scores. So you can see that they break down each subgroup, and each subgroup has a target. So let's say 2024 targets. It will give you the achievement score from last year versus this year, and then it will assign points, so depending on how close you come to your target, you receive points. So some of the, so if you look at overall, last year was 478, this year was 478.1. So we decreased just a tiny bit, but we maintained from the last two years. However, we did not meet our target, which was 481, so that's how you read this chart. So we received 1 point for that. Some opportunities that we still need to work on, certain subgroups, white cohorts, multirace cohorts, African-American cohorts, and students with disabilities, areas that we continue to work on, and there's plenty of opportunities where we can improve those. Some positives, again, our lowest performing, not only did we help them come to school more, but they also had the biggest gains, and we received 2 points for that. Also, our high needs group, our Asian group, and our Hispanic group all had some positive gains. And some, really, we talk about opportunities of growth, so some things that we're doing both in math and ELA, we're trying to write more in our new curriculum, HMH, so this is our second year using that curriculum. We're making sure that it's critical thinking in every lesson, making sure there's opportunities of discourse in every lesson, and making sure that, we spent a lot of time talking about learning targets, success criteria with our students last year, and that continues again this year. And the biggest change is giving staff more opportunities for co-planning. So we have an hour a week where staff get together with their ESL staff, the special education staff, and content staff, and they're able to have an hour, at least an hour a week, of structured time when they can plan together.
What's the difference between achievement and growth?
So the achievement score is basically what you scored on the test, and they put it into a scale score. Growth is going to take your score from last year, they put you in a cohort, and then they judge that cohort, how far does it grow, and then they assign that a growth score.
So our growth seems?
So growth, again, we continue to do a pretty good job the last few years in growing students. Again, I call it, you want to be in the field goal, you want to be, typical growth is between 40 and 60, so that's where we are doing a pretty good job on. And then you can see, like, our Asian students, you know, got 60.5, which exceeded typical growth. So again, I call it kicking the field goal. You want to kick it between 40 and 60, and so we continue to want to grow that. The achievement is the area where we got to continue to move our students. So our students are starting a little bit lower, we're growing them, but they have long, they have further way to go, because we're just starting a little bit lower. Hopefully, that answered your question.
Yes, thank you.
And then if we go to the math achievement, again, same thing, you can see a lot of positives in the math, so we scored a lot, 2 to 3 points in a lot of categories. So we continue to close a gap on math, but again, there's still opportunities, we're not quite meeting our targets. But you can see, again, all students, 479.2 last year and 479.8, so again, a positive change. And again, a lot of positive change in math. And let's see what else we have here. So again, and I don't want to paint myself, but we, again, we're again focusing on critical thinking in our math classes, we're focusing on student discourse in our math classes. Probably the one other thing in math is, we are also focusing more writing in math and working on constructive responses, because we find when we look at our MCAS data, constructive responses seem to, we really struggle with that. So again, that's an area that we're focusing on in math. And again, our math growth scores, again, everything is between, again, 40 and 60, a lot of 2 points. Again, our Asian cohort, 64.9, exceeded typical growth. Our African-American and black students, again, typical growth, but high, 50.2. So again, a lot of positive, we're growing our students, like you can see, but again, we just, we have to, we got to get that bar up for our achievement scores. Science this year, we took a little bit of a dip. Last year, we received all our points in all the categories for science. This year, it seemed we took a little bit of a dip. I'm not quite sure why, but, and I don't know, I heard some that typically, science did drop a little bit, and I don't, that's kind of what I heard statewide, but we definitely took a little bit of a hit in science this year. And so we're taking a look at that and seeing what we have to change and what we have to improve in our science scores. Again, this is like our third or fourth year using our open-side curriculum, so we continue to improve using that. And again, increasing co-planning opportunities for our science teachers, so they have an opportunity to not only work during that extra hour that I give them a week, but they also have a PLC time as science. So they have two opportunities, they can work with their colleagues for planning.
Do you know why on science, the Asian and African-American black aren't? There's no numbers for them?
Because of the number of students in that category. So for example, our African-American black students, there's only 21 students that tested. You need at least 30 to actually?
This is just 8th grade, just 8th grade takes.
Only 8th grade does science.
Yeah, everybody, 6, 7, 8 does math, and ELA, science is just 8th grade students.
But if they had 30 or more students, then it would be a reported cohort, a subgroup.
All right, I think what makes us unique and special, and you know, a lot of diversity, obviously in official public schools, we have a lot of subcategories, as you can see, not only at Long Joe, but in official public schools, where some school districts only have one or two subgroups, right? So this is what makes us special, and it makes us different than a lot of schools, a lot of surrounding schools. Next up is our access score, so this is our second language learners, who take the access test in January. So middle of January until middle of February, we take this access test, and so we did drop a little bit. Last year, we went 9.8, and this year, we were 7.0. And again, this is the progress towards attaining English language proficiency. So again, we dropped a little bit, so we didn't quite meet our target. So we got 8 points, but again, so there's rooms for improvement. Last year, I think we got 0 points for this, so again, a little bit of improvement. We've increased the amount of ESL teachers at Long Joe this last, the last two years with a total of 6. Our ESL population continues to grow. I think right now, again, it changes every week, so we have about 161 of our students that are in that category. And so we're trying to get more direction with our, sorry, direct instruction to our ESL students from our ESL teachers, so we've increased that. We've also increased the co-planning time again with our ESL staff and the content teachers. So some of them are co-teaching with ELA teachers and science teachers and math teachers, so giving them opportunities to work with them. We also have an, we had an opportunity last year to work with Dr. Cooper. She's an author from Injustice for Ls, and so the last, last year, we had an opportunity to work with her, she worked with my staff, and this year, we're going to have an opportunity of working with her again. And she comes in as an objective opinion, and she works with my leadership team, and has worked with my ESL staff, and all my staff, and focusing on needs of our ESL students. So we're very fortunate to have the opportunity to work with her again this year. Chronic absenteeism, again, a lot of positives, again, so on this one, again, you can see a lot of points, a lot of 4 points and 3 points in a lot of the subcategories. We exceeded our targets. Again, we ranged between 48% and 20.8%. So again, our target was 39%, and you can see, we got 37.9%. So again, this one is the lower the better, so this is the one you want it lower, okay? It can get confusing sometimes. And again, so when I show you the next slide after this, you kind of, I have the history of Long Joe for the last over 10 years, which you'll see in a second, so it's interesting data to look at. But we continue to really work at this. We do attendance prizes every month, we do perfect attendance certificates, we do drawings, we do ice cream at lunch, again, PTO sponsors a lot of these things. So just trying to recognize students that have perfect attendance. And then after the first trimester, we'll do a little breakfast for those kids. So again, recognizing, so we're always looking at chronic absenteeism, but we have, I think we had close to 300 kids that had perfect attendance for September. So we continue, we continue to struggle, but we do have a segment of our students that are there every day.
Wow.
So we just need to grow that, so it's more than that. So again, this next one is, I kind of went back the last 10 years to see the history of Long Joe. And again, there's some differences here, so years ago, they had, you know, grades 5 to 8 at the school. Again, Long Joe's been through some changes, right? And then they used to have the extended learning time. So the last few years, we went, as you know, we had the redistrict a couple, 3 years ago, where we changed the schools from 6 to 8, and, you know, staff were merged together at Long Joe. We probably, Long Joe-McKee are probably the two schools that had the biggest changes when we redistricted, as far as combining staff, combining students, and just changing the culture of the building, just by the amount of adults that we changed and the amount of students that have changed. So it's interesting data, and you can see back in 2014, you know, one of the lowest rates of chronic absenteeism was 22.3. So that's what we, that's what we got to get back to. We got to get back to those pre-COVID years and get back to those type of rates. The bottom one is just the attendance rate, so 93.7%, that's again, the percentage of the average student going to school. So you can see where we were last year, 90.6. Again, 1-point percentage, point higher than we were the year before. So again, that number we want to grow, the top number we want to decrease. And so you can see, we're trending in the right direction, but we still have some work to do with that. And then the last slide is just a quick, brief summary of the school improvement goals. And again, if you look at goal 1, really, the focus is making sure that all students have access to high-quality curriculum and tier-one instructions, so we want to make sure all students are receiving that instruction. We want to make sure that all students are just not getting pulled out of classes, that they're in this tier-one instruction. We've, like I said, we've added co-planning, learning target success criteria in all classrooms, and last year, my admin team went through over 150 classrooms, learning walks, and giving feedback to staff. So we're starting that back up again in the month of October, and hoping to continue to give feedback to all our staff. Goal 2 is really focus on making sure we're removing the social, giving social-emotional support for our students, so we've done that by, again, we've added an SEL course this year, so every student in Long Joe will go through an SEL course. We have the Rise Up program, so our real struggling students are able to get into that program, where they have one-on-one help with a special education teacher and content teachers. We continue to monitor attendance to make sure we're removing obstacles, so those students that are out 20, 30 times a year, what is getting in the way of that? So we try to meet with families and try to figure out those obstacles. We added clinical staff the last two years, we added adjustment counselor, and we've added one more guidance counselor. So we've added staff to continue to help with the needs of the students at Long Joe. Goal 3 is making sure that all staff participates in PD, that builds their capacity, that we focus, like I said, we focus on critical thinking and student discourse, so making sure all our PD wraps back to our instructional focus, so we're not just randomly picking things we're going to work on, so everything gets tied back to that. Goal 4 is, again, looking at our resources, so every year, I get a budget, and every year, we take a look at the budget needs of the school, and making sure that all staff have what they need. And so that's my job as a principal, is, again, removing the obstacles for teaching. Teaching is very difficult, and so if there's an obstacle in a way, they don't have certain resources, chairs, desks, curriculum needs, making sure that I, we use our budget accordingly to remove some of those needs for staff. Goal 5 is building a system to engage students, families, and staff, to ensure a sense of welcoming and belonging. So again, we have a home liaison that works every day on making sure we're communicating at home. We have a PTO school council that is very active in making sure, again, they help sponsor field trips, prizes for attendance. field trips, prizes for attendance, things like that, so we have a very active PTO school council. We have attendance nights, attendance breakfasts, we have the National Junior Honor Society, we have school dances that we brought back two years ago, open house and parent conferences. So trying to get many opportunities for, for the families to come into Long Joe, so we continue to try to improve that. And then the last goal is just making sure we're increasing our, again, our communication to the community and bringing stakeholders into Long Joe. So again, we work with Twenty First Century, we work very closely with Mount Wachusett with the Trio Program, we're hoping to get Garrett back at, at Long Joe, hopefully, he's probably not gonna happen this year, but again, hopefully getting, getting them back. We continue to use Facebook, connect ad, emails, those type of things that communicate with staff and families. So those are kind of some of the areas that we are working on and continue to work on.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce.
Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Pierce? So the last page that he just went over where his school improvement goals, if you want the.
The twenty-two pages.
Version of what each goal means and what they're, they are doing to achieve that, it's in here, but.
I can go over the twenty-two pages if you, no. Mr. Stevens, I'm sure you read that over the weekend, right?
But you do have it.
But you have it.
When it comes to the state providing us support, you know, based on our percentage profile, do they provide specific sports related to chronic absenteeism? Because I would think that that has a huge impact on the ability of our individual achievement students to, you know.
Yeah, they're really focused, they come really on instruction, that's what they're focused on. What are we doing as a principal, as admin team, as a district, to support the staff, to support student outcomes? That's really their focus. I've always felt attendance, we gotta get kids to school, right? So you could have the best lesson as a, as a teacher, if kids aren't at school, it doesn't matter. So getting kids to school as a, is our number one priority for our guidance council, everybody. It's not just me or the guidance staff, it's, everybody has a part in getting kids to school. So that's what we can do.
Is there any state support that could be additionally provided to, I don't know, allow us to, you know, improve our attendance, identify those causes of chronic absenteeism, and continue to work individually with these students?
I could, I could talk a little bit about that. So the state has some grants out there that will provide some, some money for schools and districts to start programs to monitor attendance at each of our schools. All of our schools already have attendance programs going on, whether it's incentive programs to get kids when they are in school to, to recognize them. They also have intervention programs that they have. Every school has a team of teachers and administrators and guidance counselors and clinical interventionists that actually work on this, and they monitor student attendance daily. So every team right now has a, has a team. Every school team has a team. We met two weeks ago as a district to share out all of, you know, our different attendance plans for each of our school. So, you know, I, I think Fitchburg, overall, each school has an individual plan to best meet the needs of the students.
Yeah, I think that's, I mean, we do a lot of things pretty good. I think attendance, we do very well as far as getting after, removing barriers. We have different levels of supports, guidance meets, which meets with me every week, the clinical interventionist, adjustment counselors, guidance counselors, we, we, like a tier support, do we just need to meet with the student, or do we have to call families in? Do we have to get, Mark has a, a attendance liaison, we bring in for the, the families that really have, that need support. And then if we have to go knocking on doors, we have a resource officer that goes knocks on doors. So we kind of have a tiered support system in place. We, we're sending out letters right now, we just had progress reports finished, so now we send the letters out. You know, and so just we continue to, to monitor it.
And one of the things, you know, Mark kind of mentioned that, that we have these teams of adults that work on this. We make sure that it's a, a non-punitive measures that we, we are working with families on. We don't want to make this, you know, something that's confrontational. What we do is we meet with families to find out what the barrier is to getting the kids to school, and then we provide support. So one of the things that Mark mentioned is that we have outside agencies that also partner with us, we have Mark, we have Luck, we also have DCF. DCF can actually, comes to some of our meetings to sit in, and not as a negative piece, but as, okay, this is where you're at, let's see what, what we can do to support you to get your child to school. And they have resources to give.
Yeah, we've also added, the courts have come, they, they came to visit over the summer, so the probation officer now comes in and meets with us once every couple of months, and we don't want, we don't want to put them in front of a judge, right? We want to find out what's the reasons why they, they're not coming to school. And there's all sorts of reasons, so trying to continue to try to move them before we have to bring DCF involved or to go to the courts and stuff like that. So we're trying to remove the barriers, so.
Well, comment. Last Wednesday, I had the privilege again of something I've been doing for many years. I was a lunch lady at Long Joe this past Wednesday, oh, six lunches.
Oh, fun.
And it's something I've been enjoying doing for many years, and the team at Long Joe and the cafeteria, well-oiled, they just did a great job, but.
I stay out of their way, I just stay out of their way.
Yeah, that's, that's, they just tell me what to do and I, I did it. But the kids were so well behaved, so many please and thank you, serving, and the kids were well behaved, so.
We have a lot of great students, we have a lot of hardworking staff that come to school every day and work hard, so.
Kids, kids were super, and I had a great time, and I'll be back.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Any other questions for Mr. Pierce? Yep.
I was just curious, I know, when the state comes in and, so they, they walk through observing, and do they actually do any modeling, you know?
So, I mean, they're coming in, I mean, they're really, they want the school to drive the change, right? So they ask for our input, and I, I know at a higher level, that they're working with the district to create, you know, district priorities and things like that, which comes down to the schools. And so they're coming in to give, you know, objective feedback. So we're kind of in it, so it's really personal to me, you know?
Yeah.
So they're coming in with objective feedback, and then ways in which we can improve, and then help me set action plans and goal setting, so when they come back the next time to see if we're making improvements. So, I mean, that's, that's what they bring to the table. And so, you know, that's what they do.
Okay.
Just, just to clarify something for people watching or listening, chronic absenteeism isn't an issue that's unique to Fitchburg.
No.
It's statewide, correctly.
I mean, after COVID, I mean, chronic absentee was widespread. I mean, like I said, it's, it's our challenge, one of our biggest challenges, but yes, it's, it is widespread.
I think you're doing everything possible to, and as you stress in as Superintendent Thompson as well, in a positive way.
That's what we try to do.
And working not just with the students, but with the families as well.
Yeah.
Thank you for doing everything you can to.
Wait, can you, wait one second, I think Dr. Knight has her hand up. Dr. Knight?
Yes, thank you so much, Superintendent, for the opportunity. Mr., I forgot your name.
Mr. Pierce, Dr. Knight, Mr. Pierce. We've worked a lot together for a long time.
Yes, Mr. Pierce, I'm sorry, I just, yes, Mr. Pierce, I just want to say thank you so much for, you know, I know it's not easy, I know it's very hard, I know, you know, what you found when you got to Long Joe and you hang in there all these last three years, you said, working with the students, sticking with the teachers, and I want to say thank you so much because our students deserve the best, and also our teachers. Now, I, I do have a couple of questions, you know, you did mention that, you know, that you're, that as a principal, your job is to provide all the resources to the teachers. You know, I, my heart goes out to the teachers also because they are the ones that are seeing the students every single day, they are the ones that are working hard, they are the ones that experiencing all of the different challenges in the classroom, and I thank you so much for not doing like some of the others, they just, you know, use Fitchburg as a stepping stone, they step and then they split, but you stayed there with the students, and that is just so important, and I commend you on that. But I also want to know that if the, the evaluators are giving the teachers an opportunity to meet with them and go through the pre-observa, the pre-observation processes so that teachers can know what to expect and so that they can be able to, to have everything in place so that they can participate in, you know, doing things like self-assessment, analysis of students, learning and growth and achievement, you know, so that they can participate in assessment of practice against performance standards, so that teachers can be able to get the help they need to be able to set goals and action planning so that we can be able to improve meeting the needs, you know? We're always looking forward to improve more so that the students can be able to, to be successful academically at Long Joe High School.
Yes, I, I think, you know, the teachers are, they're, they're in the trenches every day, and so what we've been able to provide at Long Joe is not only an hour of common planning time for them, but also some PLC time where they can work with their content teachers. So we try to give them opportunities so they have a chance to action plan, look at student work, and, and trying to meet the needs of their students, because they have the toughest job. They, they have students with a lot of needs in one classroom, and so they, they continue to, to work hard every day and try to, I know they work hard to improve their instructional practice every day, and that's all I can ask from them.
And the co-teaching model that, and this is, I'm not saying that you're not doing anything, I'm just asking if these things are, are still in place so that, you know, the teachers can be able to, to better meet the needs of the students and accommodate their various learning styles with, with all the help that is needed, because that's where the, you know, to me, that's where the, the help is needed, that's where more focus should be placed so that our students can receive the best education possible.
Yeah, so our co-teaching model is still in place, we are working with a new agency this year, Blue Engine, and so they're coming in now and kind of auditing everything that we're doing and how to help us improve. And so part of our co-planning time is so content teachers have time to work with ESL teacher, the special education teacher. We've, one thing that we have changed this year for our special education teachers is they're just, they're content-specific. So where last year, they had to go in the ELA classroom and the math classroom, this year, they're either ELA or math. So they, they're content-specific, which helps in the co-planning. So I think that's probably one of the biggest changes we've made with the co-teaching model. We still have improvements, it's not perfect, and so we continue to see how we can improve it.
And I love the way how you cultureized the school from the time you was over at McKay, is it McKay? Yes.
It was McKay.
I love the way, was it McKay, right?
Yes.
Yes, yep.
I love the way how you cultureized the school, and I, you know, I saw you doing some of that at Long Joe, please don't stop, please don't stop, because that's very important for students to be able to, to be successful and to be able to continue to develop socially and emotionally, and, you know, enjoy being there. And I know it's not easy, I'm, I'm not sitting here thinking that, oh, you have the easiest job and everything is so easy, and, you know, I'm, I'm not trying, I, I, I know, because I was there and I saw, you know? So I want to thank you, and please, don't stop, continue to do the best you can, because our students need administrators that are steadfast like yourself, and the teachers need administrators that are steadfast and that are able to, you know, to do what it take, even, you know, taking a pie in your face and so forth. Thank you.
Well, thirty-one, this is my thirty-first year, so I'm continuing to go, so.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Up next is Memorial Middle School. This evening, we have Principal Sean Walker, Assistant Principal Carrie Boydin, and also our Student Program Support Administrator, Melissa Chason. Welcome, everyone.
Thank you. Wait, give you a second for the slide deck.
Thank you.
So as Mr. Thompson mentioned, we, I do have my team here, incredibly supportive and incredibly talented team, and I'm very excited to be with you tonight. So Memorial Middle School, a couple of years ago, we branded ourselves the home of the critical thinking classroom, and that has become part of our school-wide instructional focus. We want all of our students to be able to engage in critical thinking. We want them to be able to take in information, we want to be able to use that information, and we want them to be able to communicate that information. Additionally, this year, and you'll hear a little bit about, more about this as we start to get into the data, but additionally, this year, we've added a component where we are working to build relationships and mutually supportive relationships with all of our families and community members. The photos that are shown there are just a few, just a sampling of some of the things that have gone on at Memorial last year. We have a number of things that we're very, very excited about. I'm gonna, we have six of them on the next slide that we kind of picked out six, there was many to choose from, but we, last year, inducted thirty-four new members into our National Junior Honor Society, and they joined the existing thirty-six members. Some of them have gone off to high school, unfortunately, well, good for them, bad for me, but we have a, a strong National Junior Honor Society program. We, our recent access scores, we showed some significant growth in our access scores, which is something that Memorial's been struggling with for a while. Twelve of our students were, who are now former limited English proficient and exited from the ESL program, and our ESL teachers have been working combing through the data, looking for the students that are ready to make that next jump, and working to support the students that are in a, in a lower level, or lower level for the ESL instruction. We hosted the second Civics Day for the city last year, our Generation Civics Capstone Event showcased some student projects to address community issues that were important to them. So this is all directed by the students, the students identify issues that they care about, and they come up with some suggested solutions and present them. We additionally, last year, we partnered with the One Eight Foundation as part of a grant called the Applied Learning Leadership Institute to work on creating a comprehensive instructional practices that implemented across the school in all of our content areas. So whenever students go into a classroom, we're speaking the same language to them, they don't have to try to decode what the rule is in this classroom or that classroom, or what the protocol, or what the teacher is talking about, we're trying to use that same language across the board, so the students can actually focus on what we're, the information and the knowledge that we're trying to impart on them, and then figuring out how to use that. We've put a lot of work, and I think Ms. Boydin and Ms. Chason are really proud of this as well, we've put in a lot of work in revamping our professional development this year. One of the focuses is really trying to identify what it feels like to be a student and what that, that process feels like and how we can then support students. And a couple of years ago, we implemented a program called the Family Fifteen, which is just a quick conference with parents to talk about their test result, their students' test results, what's going on, planning for high school, and we kind of do these at just about any time we can get parents into the building, so parent conferences, we have a book fair, a couple of other events, whenever they can get in there, we'll set up a table and just invite people to come over and talk to us a little bit about their students, what we can do to support them, what the information they're looking at is, what that means, and how we can help them improve on that. So the, the slide here is our accountability information. I know Mr. Pierce put in a lot of work explaining some of this for us, so may not have to go into as many details. About five years ago, Memorial was in the fifth percentile for our accountability rating, and we went into a turnaround grant and put in a lot of work, and we moved from the fifth percentile to the twentieth percentile. And then last year, we moved up to the thirty-third percentile. And this year, we took a one point, we took one tiny step backwards, and I think that bothers everybody at Memorial tremendously. So some of the, the information you'll get tonight is focused on trying to increase that accountability rating, but something that I, I keep trying to remind myself and reminding everybody else that's working with this data, that accountability rating, that really represents outcomes for students, and so it's a nice little number to look at, but what I really care about is making sure that our students have the best possible outcomes to reach their full potential.
Okay. So I'm just gonna give you just a quick overview before we take a deeper dive into each of the areas of math and ELA and our access scores and science. So with our progress towards our targets, this information is just summarizing some of our highlights here. Something to point out quickly is our, we're very proud of our lowest performing students, we have some green arrows up there. They earned four out of four in our ELA achievement. Our math achievement scored four out of four for all students, and some of our strengths include the mathematics achievement and student growth in both ELA and math. So to take a closer look at our achievement in ELA, which would be the next slide. So taking a look, most of our targets, either, they either were no change, met the target, or exceeded the target. While we did have a decline for our path forward on all students, one thing to note would be sort of the highlights of this data. Our lowest performing students exceeded their target, so they are on the path forward, they got four points out of four. Another group is our. four. Another group is our ELL and former ELL students. They also met their target on the path forward. Taking a look at our students with disabilities, they did make, even though it was below target, they made improvement. And our African-American Black students, we had, were on the recovery path, but we have met our target for that path.
And now looking a little bit closer at the math. We have a nice green circle there because we're really proud of how our math scores turned out. So overall, we exceeded our target as a school, earning four out of four points. Looking at our high needs, our low income, our multi-language learners and former multi-language learners, students with disabilities, those who identify as African-American or Black and multirace, all exceeded their target, which is huge. And then our lowest performing and our identified white students still made improvements, but below the target.
Okay. Similar to what Mr. Pierce was showing with his science achievement, we had a decline in some of our, the open SIAE curriculum that we are now using had been rolled out in phases. And this particular, the class that took this, the eighth grade class, they're, the, basically like each, there's six modules per grade level, and they were being rolled out two years at a time. So there was some lags in some of those modules. And it turns out that a lot of the standards that our students didn't do well on were the modules that they hadn't actually taken part in with the open SIAE curriculum. I am excited for this year because this group of students that we have coming up has gone through the open SIAE curriculum. If they haven't gotten all of the modules, they've gotten most of them. And our teachers have a couple of years of experience using this curriculum, which is a tough curriculum to teach with, but it is really rigorous and is really exciting. And I'm very, I'm looking forward to seeing what students can do with this curriculum.
One clarification.
Yep.
Science is only for?
Only for eighth grade. Yeah, that's one, one grade level.
Okay.
Fifth and eighth grade, take it.
Let me?
Fifth grade and then eighth grade.
Okay, thank you.
So turning back to ELA, focusing on our ELA growth. So taking a look at all of our groups here, we have typical, all our typical growth has reached the high category with one subgroup of our multirace subgroup is low. One thing that we know, even though we've made such high growth, that our work is not done. We want to make sure that we are supporting our teachers instructionally. We're doing learning walks, taking an opportunity to go through other classrooms, seeing what instructional practices are working in other areas that they can bring back into their classroom, taking a look at implementing some data cycles, looking at using data to make some instructional moves and teacher moves to better support our students. Participants, our staff, will take place in instructional rounds once a month with their, either their coach or one of us walking through with them to have a conversation after.
So looking at our math growth, we did make high growth in most of our subcategories. Our lowest performing did have low growth, but still growth. So we received two out of four points for them. We also, just to highlight, our African-American and Black population exceeded their typical growth in math. And just some opportunities to keep in mind, because like Carrie said, we're not satisfied with this, continued our opportunities in co-teaching. Mr. Pierce mentioned the Blue Engine partnership that we're taking part in this year. They're coming in, they're coaching us to coach those teachers further. And at the beginning of the year and over the summer, we put a lot of work into revamping our schedule for students to provide the most opportunities for them to engage in our multi-tiered system of supports in our school.
And then to bring us to our access test results. So we, we did gain a point this year. This is one point out of four that we did gain. We haven't in the past. One thing that we've taken, as Mr. Walker had mentioned, that our student experience for our professional development is one of our goals this year. So giving our staff the opportunity to become a student for the day. We started that in August with rolling out some of our initiatives that we had to do, but really asking the staff to put their minds, become a student. I think sometimes we forget what a student, everything that they have to go through in their day, everything that they have to, they're coming in with. And it's, sometimes it's really hard to focus on what is right in front of them. So by giving them, we were taking a look at, our last PD was the access test. So we rolled out sort of just a snapshot, but every staff member had the opportunity to actually take the access test. What did that feel like? What were the protocols in place? And a lot of our staff were unfamiliar with it. So their takeaway was, they were, we got a lot of positive feedback. It really goes along with, with our district motto of all means all. It really supported not only the staff, but it gave them an inside look to what our students are actually going through to better support them in the classroom.
And to our chronic absenteeism, we are really proud of the work that we have put in at Memorial. And this just kind of solidified that. Again, we're not satisfied. But overall, we exceeded the target, earning four points out of four. We did decline on that lowest performing subgroup, and we did not receive any points there. But just to highlight, our high needs, multi-language learners and former multi-language learners, students who identify as Hispanic Latino and multirace, all exceeded their target. And just some things to note. So we're already having promising data from this year compared to the beginning of the year, the last few years. Part of this is our instructional focus is partnering with families. And at the beginning of the year, we adjusted our practices to work with the families, like Mr. Thompson was saying, to encourage a positive and safe climate and culture for parents to work with us and identify those barriers and allowing their kids to get to school.
Okay. So our school improvement goals for this year, these are very, again, very similar to Mr. Pierce's. So by June of 2025, 100% of Memorial school scholars will have access to high-quality Tier One instruction and access to any supports needed to show growth towards outcomes as evidenced by multiple data points. We want to make sure that every single student has access to great instruction so they have, they can learn. By June 2025, 100% of Memorial students will engage in meaningful applied learning and receive the necessary support to show their growth. Additionally, 100% of staff at Memorial will fully understand and effectively use a range of tiered academic and social emotional supports to positively impact all students. We had the opportunity this summer to add a Bright program, which supports students returning to school from extended absences for whatever reason. As part of that process, we had to map out our multi-tiered system of supports, all the things that we do to support students. And it was a very illuminating and humbling experience. There was, I think, 10 or 12 of us working on that along with one of our coordinators. And what we found is that we're doing a lot to support students, and we didn't know, none of us really knew all of the things that we had going on. Every single one of us was learning about something else that day. So it was really exciting. But now we have a nice little map. It's not little, actually. We have a nice big map of all of the things that we're doing to support students academically, socially, with attendance, with mental health, and with, some of those are with outside organizations, some of those with the school resource officer from the Pittsburgh Police Department, some of those are from the staff inside the school. But all of those things are working to affect positive outcomes for students. Number three, 100% of our staff will participate in job embedded professional development that focuses and serves all students. The administration team at Memorial Middle School ensure that 100% of our resources are aligned to and supportive of the district strategic plan and the school improvement plan goals in order to improve outcomes for all of our students. And Memorial Middle School will build a system to engage students, families, and staff to ensure a sense of welcoming and belonging for all. And all staff will collectively recognize the importance of intentionally engaging the entire Memorial community. We'll focus on improving positive two-way communication and increasing involvement, especially for historically marginalized groups and those disproportionately affected by COVID.
If I may, I'm sorry to bring us back a little bit. The previous page on the chronic absenteeism, I was looking, everything here was making sense to me. And then I looked at the last line, the, it looks like it's saying it declined. It looks like the target was 28.4, but I guess I don't understand how that.
So that's, I do. That's, this is the chronic absenteeism. Remember, the lower number is better. We want to decline. And they actually.
Oh, and it went up.
Their, for that subgroup, the chronic absenteeism went up, which means that the score went down. And yes, that is confusing. And it had me scratching my head a couple of times as I was trying to explain it to people.
All the other ones made sense to me. So my brain must have flipped halfway through.
You feel confident and it flips.
Yeah. Thank you.
No problem.
Proceed.
Questions for the Memorial team?
Nice job.
Thank you.
And just to follow up with Mr. Pierce at Long Joe and what you're doing at Memorial and the presentations that we had last week, I, I hope people realize that it's more than just teaching in the classroom, which what our teachers do and do it well. But everybody, administration, teachers, parents, go beyond that to find other ways to engage all of the students, not just a certain group. And I, I'm very proud of the fact that that's, that is what's happening in our public schools. And I want to thank everybody who's involved in, in doing the best to involve everybody. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We're proud of that, too.
Any other questions?
Just a quick comment. That's, student for the day must be eye-opening. I'm sure they have a lot to reflect on.
It was really.
Yeah.
You know, we reflected a lot about the way that we've seen professional development done in the past and what's worked for us and what hasn't worked. And, and then try to apply that to our students as well and making sure that we're doing, that we're conducting lessons in a way that makes it accessible for students, make sure that they're able to maintain their focus on it. I mean, you know, opportunities for them to show what they're learning frequently. And so it's, we're trying to model that with all of our professional development, too.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. And last, but certainly not least, we have Goodrich Academy here this evening. We have our intern principal, Jennifer Fisher. And this evening, she is joined with, by Sarah Henry, who is the job entrepreneur. Sarah, I'm not putting you on the spot. You can come up or you can sit back there.
She's guidance.
But I want guidance now. I'm sorry.
She's actually our MCAS guru, and she's fantastic. So she's been really helping me figure out all this stuff along with Mr. Shalafou. So good to see everybody.
Second gen, and I'll.
Take your time.
All right. We are all set.
All right. So Goodrich Academy is really, being at Goodrich now since January, I've learned a lot about high school. Coming from the middle school and spending time with the high school kids has been a transition. I'm finding, I'm absolutely loving being with the high school kids. It's, it's refreshing. So it's been really a good change for me. We've got some really great things going on at Goodrich. I don't know if you had a chance to see the Sentinel, but we have an incredible community service project led by Mr. McNamara. He goes up to South Street every Friday to have the high school kids, students work with the kindergarten students. And I get to spend the morning the first time they did it. And it, it was amazing. These high school kids have really taken to being with the kids and help them problem solve. And it's actually led to another opportunity because of this article. The Sundial has reached out to us, and now they want a high school group of kids to go over and work with the seniors. So that's going to be starting for trimester two. My goal ultimately is to continue to work with the community to offer these kind of service learning projects and volunteering. I want to hook up with Ms. Jeffries to do something at the, at Cogswell for cleaning up the Cogswell area, maybe working with the cemeteries with Sally Craigan, but really connecting our students with volunteering. The mayor has stuff going on that I was like, ooh, that would be good for the Goodrich kids. We gotta, we gotta hop on this. So we're actually hiring a college and career guidance council, another one that will actually teach the MYCAP curriculum through Naviance, that will really look at what the kids' passions are and what they're really into. So that will lead us into really starting to develop some community service and action projects that the kids might want to do within the community, kind of like the, like an Eagle Scout project or a youth venture kind of project that they can either do on their own or with a small group. So my goal is to really continue to grow this community service kind of project in volunteering opportunities for our students. There's so much that they can gain just from connecting within the community. It's just now trying to build this out a little bit more. So our accountability data, we have insufficient data. Our sophomore class was 27 students. You have to have 30 in the cohort in order for us to get data. But as I was going through all of this with Mr. Shalafou, there was an opportunity for us to really look at where we, where else can we get data for, on our students. So last trimester, we did the HMH ELA data, so we'll have that data. Trimester two, we're going to get into the iReady Math data. So we have more data that really fits our kids' needs at the moment, not just waiting till after. I think someone called it like the autopsy report for MCAS, making sure that we have really up-to-date information on where our students at. So when you look at our accountability data, you can see that the progress towards the target, we don't have anything. And I didn't want to really go through and show you like lots of pages of this, you know, data thing. So for the next slide, if you take a look at this graph, you can see that our participation rate was only at 88%. But that's 27 students that we had in the cohort. We had four students miss the test. So we missed, out of 27, only four didn't take the test. So that dropped us right down to 88% because our cohort is so small. But you can see with the data that our numbers have dropped considerably over the last three years. So there's been a decline in our students meeting or partially meeting levels, and there's been an uptick in students that are not meeting their expectations. So we have some work. We have a lot of opportunity for some growth. And using the HMH data, we can really dig deep into what the kids need for English Language Arts. And once we get the math data, we can really start digging into what is it where our kids are struggling. Because again, Goodrich students are those kids that have struggled in traditional schools. We really try to fit and tailor the needs of our students to make sure that they have what they need. For example, we have a student that's on the spectrum. And right now, he's in a Victorian literature class, and he's like, just not going. He's walking out of class. He's not participating. So our dean came up with a really nice, he's actually reading Tale of Two Cities, and he's looking at the political lens of what's going on in the novel compared to the Victorian times. So we're able to really take the kids' interest and their needs into consideration. And that's the gem, and that's the gold of Goodrich, is we have that opportunity to do those really cool things and really tailor it to the students' needs. It's, it's been really wonderful to be part of all of this. And the same thing with our math scores. Our growth rates, this was a little bit of an eye-opener for me. As I was kind of collaborating with Mr. Shalafou about this, we really need to be moving that blue dot up to the far right corner of the quadrant, and we're really down in that bottom part for ELA. My goal for this year is really pushing that dot up to the right more and getting it out of that lower quadrant, quadrant, which is the low, the low end of both achievement and growth. So we want high achievement and high growth, but it's going to be a little bit of a challenge. And really looking at some of the assessment that we have and how can we really dig in deep and see what the kids need. For math, it was a little more, a little more disappointing, if you want to go to the next chart. We were, as you can see, down on the bottom left-hand quadrant, we've got a lot of work to do. There's a lot of opportunities to really look at what our students need and offering, you know, what are we going to be offering for remediation courses? What do we need to really pull the, the special ed staff in and see what our kids need? We do have 38% of our students on IEPs at Goodrich, and that does pose some challenges as far as how do we get their needs met. Tammy Chandler and Julie Keef, the ELA and math directors, have been really helpful to kind of help us with some of the strategies that we need to put in place to help, help our kids kind of move this bar a little bit. But I look at this as a challenge. There's a lot of room for growth. And I, I know this Goodrich staff can do the work that they need to do to get us. Goodrich staff can do the work that they need to do to get us there. This is our L, our L report. Again, there's a lot of room for some growth here. Our students are in the entering, emerging, and developing, we're kind of at that lower end of where we need to be. We definitely can move that target, we can go down to, move it to three, four, and five. I was just talking with the ESL teacher before I left about, you know, what can we do to continue to make some growth with these students? Because they don't, not only, they have him for class, but we also have a group of kids that aren't in his class, so what strategies can we use as a staff to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our Ls? And there's a lot of potential here. I think good teaching around L strategies is good for all kids, not just our L students. So, we definitely have some room for growth there. I'd like to see that, have us work on bumping those numbers up to the three, four, and five range for next year. I think that's doable for our students, and really, and I think, talking to the ESL teacher, too, he's like, you know, sometimes the kids don't take that test seriously, so we're going to really work on motivation on how they can, to take the test seriously and really do their best with it. I think that's high school, I think they're just too cool for school, and they don't want to, they don't like doing the oral test, where they have to talk into a microphone. Give me a microphone, I'm happy, but they don't want to talk into the microphone, so we've got to work on that. But I think we definitely have some strategies put in place. We're going to be really working with the ESL teacher to make sure those strategies are happening across the board.
I think it's important to mention that last year was the first year at Goodrich that we actually had an ESL teacher on staff providing services for kids. In the past, the teachers did the services on their own, but now we actually have a certified ESL teacher there providing services. This is year two for that.
And I moved him into a classroom space that he, the kids are actually, I walked in the other day, and there's like a dining room table in the classroom, and the kids were having conversation with each other, and I was like, this is what we wanted to see, because in the last space it was tight, they couldn't really see each other or talk to one another, so there's a lot of conversation going on, and they're actually talking with me more, so they're, you know, they ask me questions or they want clarification, they're actually feeling comfortable enough now to speak with me, where before they would just be like, hi, miss, and they would walk away. But yeah, I think having the ESL teacher dedicated to Goodrich has been a good change for us. Okay, our chronic absenteeism, we're doing pretty good. I have a really incredible guidance team that has played a role, they have a really great system where the kids, once they get to four or five absences, they're on the phone with them, we're tracking the attendance, making those phone calls. I meet with the kids, you know, who's got more absences, how are you going to make up these credits, how are you going to make up your credit hours? And the parents are right on board with it, too. We had our open house on Thursday last week, and it was the trick-or-treat, meet-and-greet open house, and they get, the kids receive their progress reports, and the parent, we had a really good turnout. I would say probably, I don't know, 40 to 60% of the parents showed up, and they, we talked about attendance, and, you know, a lot of parents got, you know, given their kids aside, like, I told you, you needed to be in school. So, it's been really good. Our attendance could improve, but I think, you know, right now, the way the system that we have it, we're really tackling that and getting, understanding to talk to the kids about what's going on, what's the challenge for you not to get to school? And most of, some of the times, it's, I have some students that have children at home, and they, they just can't get daycare, or they're struggling to get in daycare, some of the vouchers that they normally would have gotten have dried up. So, you know, trying to find those resources and get that stuff in place, and I have an incredible guidance team that know how to get that stuff done for them. So it's been really helpful, and trying to pull in MoC and some of the outside agencies and rekindle some of those relationships has been helpful.
Do you think with a smaller cohort, where the students see each other more often, they're kind of more often, more likely to kind of hold each other accountable when it comes to absenteeism?
Yeah, I think, and I think we have to build that culture in place. Like, the 1215 to 120 group, there, it's our highest, let's say, most kids that we have in the school, and then we have the 515 to, the later classes that go 615 to 720, and those are the kids that are working full-time. So they're working all day, and then they're coming in for their two classes at night. So, those kids kind of hold each other accountable, but it's a small group. But the, we have to start building that culture, like, it's okay to be at school, and, you know, the teachers do a great job making sure that they're there, like, I get emails and texts all the time, so-and-so isn't here, what's going on? And the guidance.
Buddy system.
Yeah, 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 so, and I've been meeting with the guidance team on Thursdays, and then on Fridays, we meet with the whole staff, and we go through each kid and what's going on, and what do we need to do, and then on Mondays, we're back at it again, making phone calls, getting those kids in. I met with three kids today, and what's going on here, what's going on with your attendance? I know, miss, I got to get to school, and, but yeah, we, they, it's really a nice, small school so that we can, they can start holding each other accountable. But yeah, one of the boys was saying the other day, he said, I like being upstairs in the other classrooms because I get to see the other kids I go to school with, it's kind of nice. So I was like, this is a good change for you, so, you know, he's like, I want to be here now because I have friends upstairs now, so it's been a nice change. Really, I'm really happy with that kind of feedback from the kids, so, it's been good. So I, you know, we're going to continue doing what we're doing with chronic absenteeism. Again, our Ls are our ones that we really need to target and make sure that they're getting there, and I have Ms. Vargas, who does speak Spanish, and she's been a great bridge for our families and really explained, I didn't realize that when I put trick-or-treat, meet or greet, I have a lot of families that are like, we don't trick-or-treat, we weren't coming to open house, they misunderstood what I was saying, so that's why I did everything in Spanish. Have you noticed a change in the newsletter this week had the Spanish translations so that we don't miss those families? There was some really good feedback, and they were able to tell me that, like, hey, come on, we don't do trick-or-treat, Jen, we're not coming, so it was really important for me to know that. Our dropout data, we have a dropout data with 8% of our students out of our 142, I'm sorry, 182. I really think we need to focus on this some more, again, that curriculum that's really tailored to the students will help with this. Again, our Ls are one of the students, a group that really has the highest dropout rate at 25%. That was concerning to me. So I'll continue to work with Ms. Vargas and our ESL teacher to work on that, and it's just that, it's just, it's a high number for that cohort. But again, out of 182, that's 12 kids, so that does, you know, it's a good chunky number, but we've got to work on that one. And then our four-year completion rate, 85, 84% of our students graduated with a diploma. We had some students that received a certificate of attainment, so again, we need to continue to work on that dropout number, and I think just that connection with home and school, I would say 98% of our families do not want their kids to drop out of school, and it's been a little bit of a battle between the 18-year-old kid that wants to drop out and the parents saying, yeah, they're 18 now, what can I do? So we're really working to make sure that we're continuing to support the students as well as the families, because the parents really want their students to get that diploma, and we want that, too. And then the extended engagement rate, again, 1.4% still in school. We didn't have any students take the HICE or the GED to get that next level if they didn't get their diploma. Again, this is 10% dropped out, whereas the non-completers, like 3.4 of our students received that certificate of attainment. So we're still working on trying to make sure that everybody gets what they need. We had one student that was at Pittsburgh High, he came to us to Goodrich, and then he moved to like Indiana, so trying to get him to come back, it was a little bit of a challenge, but I was communicating with mom all summer, and she really had to move out to Indiana for support with her family. She didn't want to, but she wanted him to come back and finish up and get his diploma. It was the MCAS test that was a hurdle for him, so, you know, we do offer the kids to come back and take those remediation courses to get ready to retake the, especially the science test. As you can see with the middle school, we're kind of in that same boat where the kids are kind of falling down on the science test. But we're working at rectifying that. Jessica Stedelski's come into Goodrich to work with our science teacher and one of our special arts teachers to make sure that we're doing the, getting the curriculum, get that sweet spot between still keeping the rigor, but where the kids are at.
Is the majority of the certificates of achievement not diplomas due to a lack of ability to pass that test?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And it's that they showed up and they went to school, you know? I wish that there was another option for our students. We're really working, I started connecting with the My, MySpace?
Myturn.
Myturn, thank you, not MySpace, that's an online platform.
Dating yourself, Jen.
Oh my God, am I, and I wasn't even part of it. But anyway, Myturn is, we're really, again, coming into this since January, I want to get back to really using our resources that we have available. I just met with the DA's office today to have them come in and do some drug awareness activities with our students on Fridays, and really setting up these speaker series and pulling in the community members to really come and connect with our students and really give them information that they can use, and invite the parents to come, too. They were all excited, they were like, yeah, bring the, bring the parents, have them come to the speaker series, so I'm really excited that we're able to do that, and really tap, there's so much going on at Pittsburgh, and so many resources that we can really utilize for our most at-risk students. So I pared down our school improvement goals to four. The two at the top are more of our academic goals, so again, providing access to a rigorous standards-based curriculum to meet our students' unique individual abilities. Again, our highest-risk students, we really need to work on making sure that they get the curriculum that they need, but at a higher, at a high rigor level. Again, utilize resources from a variety of sources to create a multi-tiered system of support. Michelle O'Leary came over from Goodrich, I mean, from Long Show to Goodrich, she's a special arts teacher who I've worked with for many, many years. Her strength, I feel, is that kind of remediation for our students, and she's really taking a look at what we can offer our kids, and she's built in, like, using iExcel for math and having the kids work at their pace, but then jumping into their regular math classes and getting that curriculum, so really shoring them up, so that's been a help. Just really looking at what resources that we have available for our students has been really helpful, and she's got that lens that, she can speak to that stuff, and I'm like, oh, that makes sense now, you know, she really can make it work for our students. Again, with our guidance staff and our teachers, Goodrich has been a safe and orderly environment. Coming from middle school for 15 years or 30 years and going up to Goodrich, I was like, this is unbelievable, this is so nice, the kids here are great, you can have conversations, you can joke with them. It's just been a really respectful place to be, and I just, it's really a great school. So that's really a tribute to the staff and the guidance staff and the teaching staff there, and it's just, the kids are fantastic. Again, to improve attendance, we're going to continue our hard work with our families and outside agencies, and reaching out to the community to really get the kids to come into school. The Boy Scouts have actually reached out, they want to come in and do some stuff with the kids, so I think the more we can access the community part of it will be in good space. And then getting activities that the kids want to engage in and participate in, and again, that two-way communication between home and school, and, you know, making sure that we have the stuff in the right languages for our families and having people that can translate for us. And one of the things that I really wanted to focus on this year with our teachers is that discourse, having an opportunity for our students to really talk with one another and have conversation about what's going on, whether it's in class or what's going on in the, in the school, and, you know, they can talk about whatever content there is being discussed, and they can agree or disagree, and that's been a really big change for us at Goodrich, I think getting the kids to talk, because I'd walk into classrooms and it was so quiet last year, I'm like, we got to get these kids talking to one another. So the teachers have really been trying different strategies. Deb Hooper came on Friday and did some PD around vocabulary, which is like kind of rap and using music to do vocabulary building with our students. So I'm curious to see how they, how they take that and run, and using different, you know, online games like Kahoot and other stuff, just to get the kids talking to each other. So it's been good. So that's kind of us in a nutshell.
Thank you, Jen. Questions for Mrs. Fisher, Rosemary?
It's not a question, Mrs. Fisher, it's a comment. Just what you described there in your last paragraph is, I'm a substitute teacher, and I observe the same thing, they seem to be finally emerging from that quietness, that strangeness that went on with COVID. It's interesting that you noted that as well.
Yeah, it's, and it's the phones. You know, we did make a rule at the school that cell phones have to be in their pockets during instructional time and earbuds out, so they're not in their own little worlds, and really getting that, it's been a challenge. The kids have been really great about it, so only a few kids I've had to have conversations about with their phones.
Just anecdotal, I just had one class, and only one, in all the classes that I've had, where the teacher, where the students came through the door and the teacher had something hung up, like you might put your shoes or something, and they came in the door and put their phone up. Everybody did it. No, I was amazed. I've actually seen it done. I guess it's expectation.
Yeah, yeah.
But it made a huge difference, and then close to the bell time, they'd get up and get their phone.
Yeah, I agree. I had those phones, so, you know, they can get in their own little world, I know, get sucked into, you know, TikTok for two hours, and then, you know, it's gone. Anything else? Good.
So, what is the definition of dropout? I mean, what determines that I dropped out, I just have missed class? Like, the example you just gave about the one student, they had to move to Indiana.
Yeah.
And it's, to me, I wouldn't consider that as somebody dropping out, it's a whole different circumstance. I'm just wondering, is it a state standard that's applied to determine?
From what I've, from the short time that I've been at Goodrich, for me, it's the kids that say, you know, I'm not coming back, you know, they just don't show. We did send out a bunch of letters, and it's interesting, okay, you haven't shown up, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to unenroll you, take you off our rolls, and then three of them came back and said, no, I want to come back to school. So I had one showing up when I was coming here, and he's like, miss, I really want to come back. So he's going to start back with us on December 2nd, and he's starting to understand, like, oh, I really need to get my diploma. So, you know, really connecting with those kids and making sure, but I also need to make sure they understand, like, you got to come to school, you can't just be a student at Goodrich and not show up. So sending out those letters saying, hey, you haven't come in 10 days, where are you? You know, but we make those phone calls before that, but then sending out that letter saying, okay, either you come into school or we're going to have to unenroll you, and that usually is enough of a push to say, okay, I got to come back, you know, that I'm going to lose my spot.
Yeah, I can speak to it a little bit, too, Jim, and before doing so, I would just say to Jen and Ms. Henry and the team, you know, any of the data that Goodrich produces around graduation rates, dropout rates, is pretty astounding, because the population, at least many of the kids that I was associated with at Pittsburgh High, they are really pulling towards dropout, like complete dropout, and for a variety of reasons. So the work that goes on there is impressive and great job. In terms of a student who moves out of state, that's not a dropout. When they move internally within the state and don't enroll in another school that's captured in one of the SIMS reports, that's a dropout, or if they officially just notify the school that I am withdrawing and I have no intention. If they, if they do leave, if they're withdrawn without intention but then return, that's re-engagement, so that's great, and that's a good thing that Goodrich does a lot of, so I hope that helps.
Yep.
And our goal is always, you know, I'll tell the kids, all right, one girl just came back, she's 17 or 18, and we had to put her in as a freshman, and she understood that, but she's like, I'm going to work and get my, my, she has to be done by, she's 21, but, you know, she knew she could come back and give it another shot, she's, miss, I tried the working thing, you don't make a lot of money for 40 hours, I really need to, I need to get my diploma. So she had to go out and find out the hard way, and now she always has a home to come back to to say, yeah, and we're supporting her with that.
Thank you.
But just, may I?
Yeah, Rosemary.
Another thought, possibility, is there any relationship between students who have graduated in the past, no matter how many years ago, coming back and maybe in a, in a talk and inspire, inspire kids?
Yeah, I think that's probably part of our, you know, try-to speaker series where I can, I would love to get some graduates of Goodrich that are working and successful and doing what they need to do.
Tell their story.
Yeah, tell their story. We had one student, he came back, he became a airline attendant, and he was so tickled about getting this job, and he really said it was due to the teachers at Goodrich that motivated him to go apply, because he would never have done it, and they kind of showed him how to do it, and he, with great personality, I met him once, and I was like, this would be a perfect kid to come back and speak to our students about, you know, having that grit and perseverance to, I mean, that's pretty scary when you're going to apply for jobs in Boston, and your kid from Pittsburgh, you're like, okay, I'm going to go do this, and, you know, he did it, so.
Well, that's, I don't know if you're speaking of a kid, a recent kid, but I meant even in the past.
Yeah, yeah. And I don't have the historical as much as, you know, some of the teachers that have been there for a while on how to reach out to these kids. We do have. We do have our Facebook page going again, so I can reach out and say, hey, anyone, you know, who's, who's out there that might want to come speak to the kids? I'm sure we would get takers, you know, that would come in and talk to the kids.
Definitely.
I just wanted to say thank you for the newsletter, I really enjoy reading it.
Our nocturnal news.
As the mayor said, we were reading it today at noon time, maybe it should have been midnight. We appreciate you sending that out.
Well, it's funny, I put in that owl, you know, the, they kind of shout outs about the kids, and one girl had taken a picture and texted it to me, she said, because she's really been working hard to get to school, and she said, miss, this meant everything to me. So I think it's really important to give our kids those atta boys and atta girls, so that, you know, hey, you're doing a great job, I know how hard this is for you. So she was, it was.
Yeah, that little student section where they came to help out for, what is it, a school committee or school parent night? Parent-teacher night, is that what it was?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that was a nice write-up.
Yeah, yeah, and just to acknowledge their hard work, you know, so they deserve kudos just like everybody else does.
That's right. Thank you, Jen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thanks a lot.
She's a man, a woman of many words.
So I just, a quick thank you to all the administrators presenting tonight, I really appreciate you putting in the effort and staying late this evening, so thank you so much. You're free to go now, you can head home. Big round of applause for the team. And one of the things I just wanted to mention, you may see a friendly face in the audience tonight, Craig Shalafou. Craig Shalafou, longtime teacher, administrator here in Fitchburg, is back. This year, one of the pieces that we did was we implemented, implemented a new mentorship program for all principals in the district, and Craig actually oversees that program this year. So that was one of the things that Dr. Knight actually asked about, and we're really happy to report that we did start that program this year with the support from you. We used some SOA funds to, you know, pay for the support from Mr. Shalafou, in addition to providing some additional coursework and materials to our administrators, so thank you. It's going great. Right now Craig is actually visiting all the schools, he helps, Goodrich, you're mentoring Jen at Goodrich, you're mentoring John Mendy's at Ryan Gold, Hannah Capone, I'm Hannah Capone, Hannah Tumber, excuse me, at South Street, and then Sean Walker at Memorial, right, those four. And then he's also supporting their admin team, so he's providing, one day a month, he meets with them after school to do, as a cohort, to do some work with them, and then in addition to that, he's in the building, supporting them at the building level.
Great.
So like a new principal?
Mentorship, yeah, just like a new teacher gets a mentor, our new principals in the district get a mentor.
Like a three-year thing?
This is, our first year is this year, so this is year one. Glenda and Craig actually did a lot of work on this over the summer and in the fall, and this is kind of our first attempt at providing some support, so.
See how it goes.
We'll learn from it, and we'll adapt that as we go on, but we're really happy to say that we now have a mentorship program for our principals, which will help, as Dr. Knight said, keeping talent here in Fitchburg, so it's not a revolving door all the time.
I was just going to say, because here we have someone that devoted his career to Fitchburg, and it's nice to see the passion still there. Thank you, Craig.
Thank you. He's never, he's never going away, he really has.
I know, I know.
Thank you, Mr. Shalafou.
Thank you.
Have a good night. All right, moving on with our agenda this evening, in the packet, actually not in the packet, I think I emailed it to you Friday afternoon, or Mary Alexandra did, what are my, are my goals for the 2024-2025 school year? I won't go through each line by line, but I'll talk to you a little bit about the goals and why I decided to focus on these for this school year. So my first goal is the student goal, which talks a lot about mathematics. I'll read the goal to you. Middle school math teachers will utilize formative and summative student work, data to develop appropriately scaffolded lessons that are inclusive of grade-level standards, and make up use of the district's high-priority instructional materials, so that all special education students have daily opportunities to explain and justify their thinking, showing their work in writing or speaking in all learning spaces. So, lot, there was a lot of words there, a lot of education jargon, but if you remember back from last spring, when I reported out on my entry plan, I talked to you about the work that we were engaging in with the statewide system of support the state. So this goal that we came up with for our students is based on the work that we did from a two-day retreat, working with the state last year, and looking at, examining all our student data. We decided, based on looking at our data, that we wanted to focus on middle school math in grades six to eight, specifically our special education cohort, because those are the students that are not making progress in mathematics. So that is the student goal for the year. What we're going to be doing is we're going to be working with teachers during professional learning communities to develop those lessons that are focused on students, that are focused on standards, that are focused on supports the students need to access that grade-level content. So that's the work that we're going to be doing with teachers, and again, we're going to then be monitoring that by working with the instructional leadership team at the district level to make sure that our students, what we came up with for our action plan, that these students are actually making gains, and if they're not, we have to come back, change our action plan, and then implement that back. A lot of this work for our student goal is going to be focused on looking at student work, the actual work that they produce in class, to make sure they're understanding it. We don't want to wait till the end of the assessment, that summative assessment, because it will be too late, we want to do it as the students progress throughout the year, day to day. So that's, in a nutshell, the first goal. You can go and read the key actions on what I will do to achieve that goal, and then on the bottom, that's the benchmarks, that's what I hope to achieve this year for our student goal, okay? And I can ask any questions on that. So that's the student goal.
I have a question.
Answer any questions, excuse me. Yes, Rosemary.
I'm thinking about teachers and long-term teachers, not brand-new teachers, not teachers of a few years, and I just don't, I don't hear, I hear a lot of innovation, and I don't hear a lot, I hear appreciation when the teachers who have, you know, devoted however many years to it leave, and then we all appreciate it. But I'm just wondering how sensitive we are to teachers and their skills that they've already developed, and are we, are we pressuring them to always, well, now you got to do what's going on right now, right now, or they're part of the continuum, they're part of the whole? I just would like to hear more about them, am I explaining?
Yeah, well, I can talk a little bit about that and how it relates to the student goal that I just talked about. We're not, I wouldn't say we're doing anything highly innovative on what I described for my student goal. What we're basically doing are bringing our teachers together to actually plan for the students in front of them, right? And when you talked about appreciating teachers, our teachers, especially our veteran teachers doing that work, they're actually leading that.
Okay, well, that's the veteran teachers, that's a good word.
Those are the veteran teachers, they're leading that work in their group. So the other teachers, the new teachers that are here maybe for three years, two years, one year, that are also working with those teachers, we're honoring the veteran teachers because they're supporting them, and they're supporting their practice.
And this is a retroactive question, but is this position that you just described of mentoring?
Yeah, Mr. Shalafou's position for principals, yes.
Is that a position that other schools in the district have held? Or is this a new position?
So a lot of districts right now have always had a teacher mentorship program for our teachers. We, the state required, finally started collecting data on a principal mentorship, I think it was last year, correct, or the year before?
It was two years ago.
It was two years ago, Glenda. So we never had that before. I'm not quite sure if other districts did, but Fitchburg didn't. So that's why, looking at our retention rate of principals and the turnover that we were having, that was one of the reasons why we wanted to make sure we had supports for our principals, so they aren't left on their own during the first few years in Fitchburg.
And are you still being tutored?
Yes, and I'm going to talk, it's in here, I'll talk about that. That's my third goal, my professional goal, which I'll get to, but yes, I am.
Yeah. So you realize the importance of it?
Oh, absolutely. Mentors are the lifeline of a lot of educators, they really are, they do a lot of work. Yep.
My son-in-law's in charge of mentoring in Gardner.
Oh, he is, okay.
At Gardner High School.
Okay.
And coordinates all the mentors in the system.
Yep, absolutely. So that's my student goal, my district improvement goal, looking as a district as a whole. If you remember last year, when I reported out during my entry plan, I told you that this school year is the last year for our strategic plan for the district, okay? So that means the plan that we started back in 2019, 2020 is up at the end of June 2025. So we have to have another five-year strategic plan developed. That's my goal for the district. So starting now, all the way until June, I actually outlined all the different steps that my leadership team, in addition to, we're partnering with Focus Schools, Carrie Purcell, she's worked with us for several years, she's also going to be supporting us in doing the work around our new strategic plan for the next five years. She's going to help us with the focus groups, with organizing it, with looking at the data, with getting the information from the focus groups, and looking for trends and coming up with our next five-year strategic plan. That being said, all of you will be getting an email from Mary Alexandra in the next week or so, asking to set up a one-to-one, 30-minute interview with myself, with Carrie Purcell, to actually do, start some of this work, okay? So you'll be getting, you'll be highly engaged in all this too, you'll be invited to the focus groups throughout the year too. So what I did was, like I said, I gave the timeline for you on what each month we're going to be doing to get the strategic plan, hopefully, I say done by June, but if not, I'll have it for you the first of the year next year in August, September. My goal is to get it done this year. It's an ambitious goal.
First of the year next year, you mean, beginning of the school year?
What's that?
By first of the year, next year?
First, yes, first of the school year, yes. August, September, 2025, yes, not June, January, but yes.
In the past, John, school committee has been involved.
Yeah.
The strategic plan, going back to Mayor Wong, we were involved in City Hall, the old conference from downstairs, and participated in the goal-setting and the strategic plan.
Yeah, you guys all have valuable information that we want, so we want your, we want your voice to be heard, to help us guide the work that we need to do for the next five years, so.
We need to be talking about our science programs. I have concerns.
Yeah, I don't know if you want to, can I, can I finish my goals and then I can answer that question? And I'm sure Glenda will also chime in, because there's been a lot of changes. So that's my, that's the district improvement goal, that's the work that I'll be doing this year. So you have the key actions there, and again, the benchmarks are there also. And then my last goal is my professional goal for me this year, Rosemary asked about that. I am in the second year of the new superintendent's induction program, so this is year two. I have the same coach, Dr. Becky McFall, she's also, you know, again, meeting with me. I meet with her, I think it's a, it's four hours now a month instead of six, like I did last year. So I meet with her four hours a month, and then every month, we either have an in-person or a virtual meeting with my cohort, so all the other second-year superintendents in the program, I also meet with once a month.
How many other?
Last year, there were 32.
Is this just within Massachusetts?
Just within Massachusetts, yes, yep, yep. So I think this year, they might have been close to 30. I think the number's 30 every year, they say, around there.
Nice.
Okay. So those are my goals for the year. Do you guys have any, any questions on my goals? If you do, you can bring them to next committee meeting, or if you want to have a conversation with me, please let me know, okay? Science, do you want to talk a little bit about the changes in science and the curriculum that we're using, Open Saiad?
Yeah, absolutely. So I, I will share that, first of all, the curriculum that we're using is, is hands-on. I, you know, many of you actually saw examples of what the science curriculum looked like last year and kind of the components that were being shifted. I think one of the, one of the things that I could say that could potentially have impacted our data, and it's worth us kind of looking into and really digging deep, is, you know, similar to what Sean said, we rolled out different units of the science curriculum a little bit at a time, so it wasn't like we did a full curriculum adoption, because these are the model curriculum units that the state is actually creating to make sure that they are aligned to our standards and also aligned to Massachusetts state standards. So not only were they looking at a high-quality kind of resource that was open for, you know, use across all districts, but also that were very much aligned to Massachusetts, it took time for that curriculum to be rolled out at each grade level. So when it was first rolled out, it didn't cover every single unit, so there was kind of a transition where you had to take on some of the curriculum and continue with our previous standard-based practices. At this point, we're in full implementation, and we've been training educators. I will also say, you know, one of the other things that we are moving to in terms of, you know, speaking to the curriculum, because it is vast, there are a lot of resources, it's very much intended for students to discover based on a phenomena, right? And there are a lot of materials and resources, you have to be thoroughly trained on this. And so, you know, we have had conversations about teacher turnover and having a curriculum, you know, as vast and important as this. So Jessica and I, the director of science, have really been working on, well, what does an internal, you know, system look like for professional development and onboarding our teachers right from within? Because a lot of that onboarding has been being delivered over the past few years from the state, and we've had to send our educators out of district to go to professional learning. So a major thing that we've been focusing on this year is creating that professional learning in-house, and so I think moving forward, instead of sending, you know, people out to get this professional development, we're going to do everything in our power to, you know, make sure that we're supporting our educators, you know, right here in Fitchburg in terms of professional learning. And, you know, the other thing that I think is really important is that, you know, we have a science coach now, he's actually been supporting Long Joe, and will be, by the end of this week, coming back to our central office to continue to support staff who are new in, in science. Science is actually an area, I will say, in terms of, and this is data across Massachusetts that you can look up, science is actually one of the neediest areas in terms of teacher and hiring across the state of Massachusetts. It's, it's definitely a struggle and definitely has been an impact, but, you know, something that we're making sure to address.
Can you also mention too, Glenda, about the other science curriculums out there, how there's not many out there?
Yeah, absolutely, thank you for saying that. So one of the things that really has been a huge discussion in the Department of Ed is that, in general, in middle school, there hasn't been a huge adoption by Ed Reports or by Curate and DESI. There hasn't been a named high-quality resource for specific content areas in secondary. One of the major reasons why Open Saiad has kind of been widely used is it's the first curriculum in the secondary level that the state has actually deemed, that while, you know, at this moment, they haven't finalized their Curate process for this particular curriculum, but they have committed to making sure that by the end of next year, it will be finalized as a high-quality resource by the state. So it will be the first, you know, high-quality resource that we have for secondary science. There is no other curriculum that actually, either on Ed Reports or on Curate, has a high-quality resource for science.
Are we using a textbook that would cover like six, seven, and eight across our whole system like we used to? Like, I'd say, a hardcore embrace science textbook? Like, say, a hot court embrace science textbook?
No, this is, yeah.
We're not aligned across the system, then?
No, we are.
No, we are.
We are all doing the same thing.
We're all using Open Saiad, yep. And actually, the state is working to align us across the state in this area as well. So one of the other things that is happening across the state is that they're, so, starting last year, they were starting to pilot new science assessments to make sure that they are aligned to the current, you know, science standards that we have. So last year, they started piloting, you know, this year, there is an expansion to the pilot program, it's gone beyond 100 schools. And so, you know, there should be a new science assessment that is going to be implemented by next year. So there's a lot of shifts in terms of science across the state, you know, and with DESI themselves, so, you know, I think, I think it's important to acknowledge that some of that could definitely impact our scores.
Is that one to five aligned across the district in science?
Yep.
Yep.
So is this all primarily with the middle schools, or is this for the high schools as well?
Yep, good question.
Yep, so for the high schools, we use Open Saiad for some content areas, but we are also very standards, excuse me, we have resources that are standards-based and standard-aligned for other grade levels, because there are, again, science is one of those areas where we don't have high-quality resources, you know, actually deemed for certain areas, so there are certain spaces where, you know, we have to use other resources. For example, you know, we've been using some of the units for physics, right? And so there's been kind of adoption of some of the units that have been coming out for physics as well. But again, you know, there's very unique courses in science programming, right, in the high school. We have biology, we have physics, we have chemistry, not every single one of those, you know, we don't have chemistry for Open Saiad, right? So there are very specific courses that, that still use standards-based programming.
Thank you.
If I could ask, excuse me, just one more thing. In the high school, so we're looking at ninth through 12th, do they take science every grade? Is it, like, I didn't realize that we only did science on the fifth and eighth grade.
You mean MCAS testing?
Oh, was that what, it was MCAS for science?
The state only, the state only tests in fifth grade for science, eighth grade for science, and 10th grade for science.
Okay, all right, but they do get some kind of science every year?
Yes, every year.
Okay, I was a little concerned.
Whether it's at the high school, biology, chemistry, environmental, physics, anatomy, so they do.
Earth science.
Earth science. That was my nature.
That's a good one.
All right, moving on. Thank you, great questions around science. Moving on to our donations, so we have five donations for you this evening. The first one is from Amanda Baker for Longscho Middle School. Amanda is donating a upright piano and the cost of moving it to the school.
Wow.
The estimated value is anywhere between $8,000 and $10,000. The piano will be used for music performances and also other activities. The second donation is also for Longscho Middle School from Chevy Back-to-School Program in the amount of $500 to be used for field trips, field day, and attendance awards. The third donation is from our friends at Emmanuel Lutheran Church for Fitchburg Public Schools students. They donated 12 boxes of clothing with an estimated value of $1,200.
Only 12?
That's what they said, yeah.
That's a lot.
The fourth donation is for the Fitchburg High School Music Department from the Class of 1964 Reunion Committee, they presented last school committee, for the amount of $2,500. And then last but not least, there is a donation of two compost bins to Rhinegold Elementary School from the Fitchburg Department of Public Works. And there's no value on the cost of those compost bins. So those five donations are up for approval this evening. And then last, we have one grant that we would like to submit to the Mass Cultural Council for the amount of $5,000 to support a number of multicultural events throughout the district. So those are the donations and the grants that we would like to submit. And last but not least, last school committee, we talked about the changes to the Title IX regulations, which caused us to update our non-discrimination and harassment policy number 4105. This evening is the second reading and the vote to adopt that policy.
Okay.
And that's all for me.
Thank you, Superintendent Thompson. All right, we have the action items before us. We have a motion on the action items.
I'd like to make a motion to bundle action items 24-425 through action item 24-431.
Motion and second to bundle all action items on the agenda. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have some discussion. You just mentioned, I'm sorry, you're going to have to help me, or will you please help me, Jonathan?
Yes, sir.
About this, about Title IX. Can you just show me where this is?
Yes, that is in this policy right here.
This motion is on bundling? So if we could just remove?
I wanted to make sure it wasn't in that bundle.
It is.
Oh, well, I.
It is. So can, could we revise the motion to just exclude 24-430?
Okay.
Yeah, do you mind taking back your second?
I'll take back my second.
Make a motion to bundle 24-425 through 24-431, excluding action item 24-430.
Okay, revised motion and second. Any discussion on that? Okay, any questions or comments? All in favor?
We need a roll call vote.
You are correct. We do need a roll call vote on approval of action items 24, okay, wait, so, we approve the bundle. Now let's get a motion to.
I believe we still need a roll call vote to vote on the bundle.
You are correct.
Because we have a person who's not present.
Thank you, thank you, we do. Roll call on the bundle.
Roll call on the bundle, Mayor Squalia?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Dr. Knight?
Yes.
Mrs. Jeffries?
Yes.
Mrs. England?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that's unanimous. On bundling action items excluding 430, do we have a motion on the bundle?
Make a motion to approve the bundle.
Second, the motion to approve the bundle.
All right, we have a motion and second to approve the bundle. Any comments, questions, discussion? All right, can we get a roll call vote on the approval?
Mayor Squalia?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Dr. Knight?
Yes.
Mrs. Jeffries?
Yes.
Mrs. England?
Yes.
Thank you, Mary Alexandra. We have 24-430 before us. Would you like to make a question?
I would like to have this table till after the election.
I'd like to make a motion to approve 24-430.
Second.
Motion to table, take precedent, doesn't it?
Okay, does it, I'm sorry.
We did not have a second for the motion to table, correct? Does, motion to table require a second?
I believe so.
Yeah, yeah.
Just to clarify, Rosemary, you're making a motion to table that one action?
Yeah, that one action, because it's, there's a lot to that, and I'd just like to see things settle and take a deeper look into that and a deeper look.
Can I second that motion?
Okay, we have a motion and second to lay 24-430 on the table. Any discussion or comment on this motion?
Would there be any harm in delaying this for a couple of weeks?
It would, because right now, we are not in compliance with the regulations that came out on August 1st, 2024, one, four, excuse me. So the new regulations came out, and based on the recommendation from our attorney, we need to update this policy to be compliant with what the law says.
Well, I'd like to just say that you have to take note of the circumstances that the nation, our country's going through, and I think that a delay would be understandable till things quiet down a bit, you know, then we can take a look at that, and that's what I would like to see happen.
I'm not sure. Sorry, I just want to respond, we still have to be compliant with the law. So I, I think, one of the other things that I think is really important, important for us to consider, regardless of our own personal beliefs, like, we have to ensure as a team that we are working for the benefit of making sure that the operational, the systems and the structures are moving forward for our children and families. And so withholding and not moving forward on this is actually not moving forward with complying with the law. So I think we just have to acknowledge that, that that's really important. This is not, this has no bearing on anybody's beliefs, this is a requirement by the law.
My only worry is that if we don't adopt this, we could be subject to litigation if we're not following this, and it could be costly for us.
Well, I would say compliance to the law isn't an end in itself, the law has to be examined to see whether it's worthy of compliance or whether circumstances have changed, just like you're discussing in the science, there's other things, things change, times change. And I think it would be wise for us to say, due to unusual circumstances, a presidential election, that we would like to wait till after the election and then have a look at that.
I appreciate, I appreciate your response and your consideration. I'm just going to say I respectfully disagree. Compliance with the law is actually above all what we have to prioritize in our work. We have to remain compliant with the law. This has nothing to do with the election, it has to make sure that we're upholding the law in our school system.
Well, the law has to be something to, that you would deem in your wisdom that it was worthy of compliance, not simply a dictate, otherwise you'd see in history that would be and have been.
There are outside forces that chose this, and they deemed it worthy of becoming a law. That is not our role and responsibility, determine whether something is worthy of a law.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm going to call for a roll call vote for this motion, because it is, it came to my attention that laying this on the table is a non-debatable motion. So let's just call a roll call vote to lay this, it's a non-debatable motion. It requires a second, but it is non-debatable.
Just a clarification, when we have this roll call vote, a yes vote means that we will table it, and a no vote means we won't table it, correct?
Correct. All right, so Mayor Squalia?
No.
Mr. Stevens?
No.
Mr. Walsh?
No.
Ms. Reynolds?
Table it.
So yes.
Yes.
Dr. Knight?
No.
Mrs. England?
No.
Mrs. Jeffries?
No.
Sorry, I went out of order there.
It's okay.
Okay, the motion to table 24-430 fails. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve action item 24-430.
Second. Motion and second to approve 24-430. Any comments or questions on the motion? Okay, we will call for a roll call vote.
Mayor Squalia?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
No.
Dr. Knight?
Yes.
Ms. Jeffries?
Yes.
Ms. England?
Yes.
Okay, that passes with the majority. So other business, we have none, executive session, none at this time, and next on the agenda is adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn, and that requires a roll call vote.
Mayor Squalia?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Dr. Knight?
Yes.
Mrs. England?
Yes.
Mrs. Jeffries?
Yes.
All right, we are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.